enforcement and the kids. From July 25th to August 4th, Twitter users have the chance to have video interactions with each other in a global conversation. #TweetUp powered by Shared Studios will have 40 fully immersive spaces to create a worldwide meeting place.
What we're trying to do is encourage people to embrace difference across distance. And we want people to meet people who they wouldn't have otherwise met.
The LA City Council voted to once again ban sleeping or living in vehicles within 500 feet of schools or parking on residential streets between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. The ban has started immediately and is scheduled for six months.
As if Hollywood isn't already full of fun places, well, here's one more. The Museum of Illusions will titillate all your senses that will leave you hanging upside down. Or will it? Anna Marcos takes us on a wild tour.
Here at the Museum of Illusions, you will get plenty of thrills, including this upside down house where you can do all kinds of crazy antics! All the childhood fantasies or nightmares you've ever had are about to come true at Hollywood's Museum of Illusions.
Illusions are awesome.
Can you walk on the ceiling? You bet. And is this guy doing yoga on top of the fridge or holding up the fridge? Jurassic dinosaur bones for your dog? You got it. Or how about a little time on the red carpet hobnobbing with the stars?
He's amazing.
It kind of just emits like 3D and just like your perspective of it. It's kind of cool. Just messing around, taking pictures.
It kind of expands our little imagination of like our children, you know, how we used to be like when we were five, six years old. It's like we're kind of playing it out and so it's pretty cool.
Pretend like you just saw a shark right there. What would you do? Ready? One, two, three, go!
Oh yeah, you even get concierge level help posing for your pics if you want from the very imaginative staff.
Ahhh, I didn't scream! One, two, three!
Cupcake joys, having to escape skyscrapers on fire, fantasies colorful, pretty, bad, scary, and ugly are all at your disposal.
I'm like, yo, let's smile, let's have fun, be extra, because this is the place where you can do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to have fun, you know, give the best action that I could.
For some people though, all of Hollywood, both inside and outside the museum, is one big fantasy funhouse.
Like if an artist were to like just bring out his imagination, I feel like Hollywood is a definition. Like, I really love Hollywood. It's a piece of art.
Michelangelo, move over.
For more information, visit laillusions.com. They say to never judge a book by its cover, but have you ever wondered about masks, their creation, history, and the story they're telling? Roschaguel has more on an exhibit that brings us the stories of Central America.
Eighty masks depicting the narratives and history of the indigenous and non-indigenous populations of Guatemala are now on display at Fowler Museum at UCLA. It's the Guatemalan Masks exhibit. The masks embody key characters from historically and culturally significant dance dramas.
Many of the masks that you see in here are, represent key characters out of traditional masquerade performances. And some of them are about the history of the conquest, of the Spanish conquest of indigenous Guatemala. Some of them are staging the narratives of the histories of Catholic saints. Some of them are about animal pageants that sort of demonstrate moral values.
I am so fascinated by all these masks. The masks are handcrafted and carved, and some of the oldest ones date back to the late 18th century.
You see masks that represent living combatants, and you also see masks that represent folks that have fallen in battle.
The masks were usually worn by local residents or people from semi-professional folk troops that were paid to perform. Coming to this exhibition, you're sure to learn something new.
In many ways reminiscent of Indonesian masks, which is quite, I never had that conception before I walked in here today.
Seeing these things take back us to history, like when there was nothing, like we didn't have all this technology and modern world. These days now where we have all this source of entertainment, we have everything, but we are still bored and lonely in life.
There's so much more to see here. To get the ultimate experience, you need to come down to Guatemalan Masks. Exhibit runs through October 6th, and it's free.
In addition to the exhibit, there are also activities for adults and children such as kite building and sculpting. You can find more information at fowler.ucla.edu/events. Okay, here's a question you don't hear every day. Do animal intestines gross you out? Well, it's food for so many cultures, perhaps even yours. As Gil Reyes reports, that's the theme of a new exhibit at LA's longest-running art institution.
The Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery puts on an average of nine exhibits of contemporary art every year. Today we go behind the scenes for a glimpse at all the effort it takes just to put on one show. And it happens to be their biggest art show of the year. A year's worth of planning has gone into the upcoming Awful exhibit at the Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery.
The pressure's not only on the applicants that are hoping their works will get selected into this show. We also then have all of these artworks to manage and artists to communicate with.
Curators say it is crunch time. More than 40 selected artists now work with museum staff to put everything up by opening day. The exhibit's name, Awful, refers to the eating of animal innards or intestines, how different cultures do it, and how we Americans respond.
There's that idea of other people eating those innards, like we don't eat those things. But one of the most common American foods is made of Awful, which are the common hot dogs. Oftentimes Americans are, they themselves are in denial that they eat a lot of that stuff too.
Artist Janine Shinoda will have several works on display.
In order to get the work here, a van had to come and pick up the work because it was too fragile to be in a car. For my work, this is the first time it's actually been installed in a gallery, so I came here to ensure that it was done properly. My artwork is two-sided, and so it means, it means that it needs to be hung in a way that people can get around to both sides and see both sides. So that was a consideration that had to be taken in.
And the strategy behind that, you just don't hang whatever on the wall.
Yeah, visually appealing, also stimulating for your mind.
It's food for thought. Check out Awful at the Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery at Barnes Dahl Art Park. Opening reception is on Sunday, August 11th. The exhibit runs through late September.
Established in 1954, the Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery is LA's longest-running institution dedicated to art. It's located next to the famed Hollyhock House. As always at the gallery, the exhibit is free. For more info about the museum, visit lamag.org. They're a group of female filmmakers who are creating their own unique space for women in the film industry. We meet these LA-based trailblazers in part one of a two-part report.
I assume you're reading for the role of cashier?
Yeah, ho, ho, Gina.
Well, you're obviously not reading for hot female customer.
Touche. I went through hundreds and hundreds of festivals, and I just wanted to find something very specific. Woman, funny, Latina.
I kind of went through, looked at the reviews, just went to the website and looked at other things that had been submitted, and then I was like, wow, I think I might have a shot at this, and so I entered.
Many, many, many years ago, I was an actress in Like Mother, Like Death, which won the Audience Choice Award, you know, and so then when I was beginning to do my own things, it came across my radar, and I was like, I remember this festival.
I just loved the, the log line. Says, "Women write, women direct, everyone laughs."
Oh yeah.
When we went there, I have never been in a room full of female filmmakers, like we are the majority.
And I left so energized. I was like, oh my gosh, all these women creators, like I had never seen that before. So I was just so excited to be with other women creators that were like not Ashon Deron, but that were actually like, we were all on the same level and we could compare notes. And it was, I, yeah, it was awesome.
When you're at your house, like you do feel insecure and you're like, oh, I'll never get anywhere, no, everybody's ahead of me. But I have to say, I follow Amy on Instagram, and she's like posting almost every day about her web series. And to me, that's extremely inspiring, because like, I want to give up every day, but then I see her, like she, you're what, you're on the third season?
Yes.
That's incredibly inspiring.
Yeah, really, that's our secret power, our secret weapon, is supporting each other and lifting each other up so that eventually, we're going to populate the film industry with broads.
There's plenty of room at the table, I think, for everybody. And, and the idea is that, yeah, like we lift each other up and, and we support each other. And I don't think, I don't, as much as it's a film festival competition and things like that, really like, just being here and being together is what the prize is, to get to see that quality of work and then be like, I was included in this quality of work, like, oh, that makes me feel special. And I also, it was inspiring to watch other people's things.
I really admire the Broad Humor Fest for allowing us to share our voice with a community.
So many places we don't get to tell that story, right? Because there's all these ideas about women and filmmaking, right? Like, women aren't funny, you know, or, or, you know, women aren't good directors or not good leaders, or whatever it is, right? And then there's this festival that like is just blowing the doors off of all of that, all of those notions that are just not true, they're false.
I think you achieved all of the goals that you probably set forth for the festival in terms of empowering women, inspiring women, showcasing women.
It's not just a festival for women, it is in that we are the ones, the filmmakers, but, you know, everybody was there, men and women, were really enjoying the films and the screenplays, you know, everybody was laughing together.
And because if, if nobody's seen it, if you don't see it, if you don't see a representation of that, you never know that it exists, and you don't know that it's out there. And this festival really highlights that and is wonderful.
What I was pleasantly surprised about the first time that I submitted for the festival, it's run by these brilliant women of color. And like, we know what it's like to, to feel left out of the conversation and to not have a platform. So when you give a woman a platform, she's going to make sure that more people are represented and more communities are represented. And, and that's what, what I love about the festival, and that's why I hope I come back again.
Next week, we go behind the scenes with the women as they put together the festival. If you love tea, like me, here's your chance to try a variety of different flavors. Shimmy and shake at a dance party, and get up in close and personal with Japanese culture. All this and things to do.
Come one, come all to the 11th Annual Los Angeles Tanabata Festival. This Japanese festival is celebrated along streets and inside shopping malls decorated with large colorful streamers suspended by cables and rope. Wish upon a streamer at the 11th Annual Tanabata Festival, happening August 10th and 11th from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. For details, visit tanabatalosangeles.org. Tea lovers and inquisitive newcomers alike are invited to experience the Los Angeles Tea Festival 2019. Come sip on top-quality tea and engage in in-depth discussions and presentations on teas from every region. Try unique tea pairings, craft tea-infused cocktails, and boba while enjoying colorful performances and activities. The LA Tea Festival is fun for the whole family, August 10th and 11th. The event takes place at the Magic Box at the Reef from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. For more info, visit their listing on Eventbrite. Get ready to shimmy and shake at the Rock This Plaza Rockabilly Dance Party. Enjoy live performances by two of LA's top rockabilly bands. Official gamblers Mark and Moonlight Creo. The night also includes pre-1960s hot rod cars, Eastside vendors selling vintage items, and more. It's all happening at the Rock This Plaza Rockabilly Dance Party. The party kicks off at La Plaza de Cultura y Artes on August 10th, beginning at 7:00 PM. For more information, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Red Cat's annual New Original Works Festival returns for 2019. This summer laboratory features contemporary dance, theater, music, and multimedia performances. This year's festival debuts nine new works by LA emerging and mid-career artists. Explore hybrid artistic disciplines at the 16th Annual New Original Works Festival, happening now through August 10th at the Red Cat Theater in downtown LA. For more details, visit redcat.org/festival/now19. Join the herd at a fun-filled weekend in celebration of World Elephant Day. The LA Zoo invites you to learn amazing facts about these magnificent animals and to explore various ways that the zoo and others are working to safeguard elephants in the wild. The World Elephant Day celebration happens all weekend, August 10th and 11th. The celebration will take place at the LA Zoo and Botanical Gardens. For more information, visit lazoo.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Umeima. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. See you next time for more LA This Week. Make sure to watch LA This Week, Channel 3. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org.
the residents, the public of Studio City, 25,000, I think there's a 260,000 CD2, but we can't be, not everybody can fit. You know, I think that we could talk about it with Mr. Munger before we move forward with that, because it just seems like an awkward approach, given that there's hundreds of trees, and this is a vital, kind of the lungs of Studio City. So to put a bunch of plastic fields in a container for three regulation-sized basketball courts, I'm going to try to stay calm, sir, because I know you've got a lot of relationships over there at that school, so maybe you could help.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Zack Guerrero, Sarah Sandoval, Yvonne Contras, Zack Strasters, please come, if I called your name, please come down. So just identify yourself and go and welcome.
Hi, my name's Zack Guerrero. It's an honor to be here. Good morning. My name is Zack Guerrero, and I'm here today to talk about the economy. Jobs are key to health of a vibrant economy, and we at ARMS are here to let you know that we not only help men and women in Los Angeles immediately with a job, sometimes same day, but that we also get help, get dozens of men and women into the trade unions each year. You can reach out to our Director of Operations at 323-794-3821 and ask for Zack. Thanks, and God bless you. That number again is 323-794-3821. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down. Hi, welcome.
Hello, good morning. My name is Yvonne Contras, and I'm here today to talk about the need for the youth programming. Many youth are in the streets, are here in the streets because of a lack of love of their community. And we at the ARMS organization are here today to let you know that we have a solution. For any, for any that are seeking athletic, artistic programs are free of charge, mentorship, employment, and other programs during the school year, we are open every day in order, in order for that, we will be able to find, they will be able to find a place called home in their inner city. For any more information, come visit us at ARMS of Los Angeles, or you can email armsoflosangeles@gmail.com. Thank you, God bless you, and have a great day.
Thank you. Hey, welcome. Good to see you.
Hey, howdy, stranger. How you guys doing? So again, you see some youth behind me here that were helping to get jobs. So we have recovery homes, drug and alcohol recovery homes. We house about 85 or so people, families, in the city of LA. We have jobs. We get people readily employed. We've got about 400 active employees right now, all over the city, and we usually help people to get hired same day or same week. We also refer people into unions. And so we had a big hearing yesterday. The CPC had a hearing right here, and we were out here with the union, standing side by side with skilled labor. We also help people to get into universities, and we do tutoring and mentorship. So ARMS is here for the community. Oftentimes, you hear conversations about, you know, homelessness and joblessness, and that's part of the reason that we come to City Hall to advocate so often throughout the week, is to let the city know that there are a lot of problems, but there aren't a lot of people offering solutions, and that's why ARMS is here. So again, 323-794-3821 is the number, if you know anybody looking for jobs, or drug and alcohol recovery services, or mentorship, or school readiness. Thanks, have a great day.
Good to see you. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Your Honor. My name is Mark Wilkins. You know, I think ARMS is a very wonderful vehicle to be used to help people get up on their feet. I was once homeless one time. At one time, you know, they provide jobs for the community, if someone that really wants to change their life, ARMS, they step in and they make a difference in other people's lives, and, you know, we want to be the voice to the community to let other people know that there is help out there, to whoever's struggling, the ARMS incorporation is a very wonderful stepping stone for people to, you know, wants to get up on their feet and to change their lives, you know, if they're strung out on drugs, or if they're homelessness, or whatever it is, ARMS, they step in and they help them, help the individual out any way possible that they can, and, you know, it's a good vehicle. So, you know, you have our number there and the information to get ahold of ARMS, and when there's out there struggling, or, you know, has a problem with housing, ARMS can step in and they'll find a way to help the individual to get up on their feet. Thank you, Your Honor, have a nice day.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now we're going to move to the presentation portion of our agenda today.
Mr. Wesson, I assume you're ready for your presentation?
Yes. Can I ask my special guest to join me today? Links, come on, stand up. Come on and surround me. Good morning, members. Good morning, Mr. President. It's an honor to present to you today a group of outstanding individuals. We are celebrating Links Incorporated, the Los Angeles chapter. We do this on a regular basis. This organization has existence, existed since 1946, and I think it's existed, this chapter, since 1950. And they do phenomenal work throughout, not just Los Angeles, but throughout the globe. They have over 15,000 members, almost 290 chapters in 42 states, including the Commonwealth of the Bahamas and District of Columbia. They focus on enriching the lives of African-Americans, young African-American ladies in particular, and they do that by training, mentoring them. They afford them the opportunity to do community service work. They do that in either the field of the arts, or assistance to youth. They also do health and human services, and if there's a kind of a hot topic trending, they will also get them engaged in those efforts as well. Each one of these young ladies behind me are phenomenal young ladies, and they have put in more than 75 hours of community service, primarily in the 8th District, the 9th District, and the 10th District. And they're going to be having their big shindig. When will that be?
November.
In November. So they're gearing up now for this great event. I don't know, Mr. Harris Dawson, or Mr. Price, if you were ever had invited to participate in one of these cotillion, I know I did, but, you know, that's expected, but I did, and brings back good memories. My uncle worked at Ford, gave me a brand-new Mustang, and I was, anyway, it was a great... But these, it just prepares these young ladies to recognize how important it is for them not only to be successful, but to give back and to help others. You know, we're only as strong as our weakest link. But this year is a little special. It's a little special to me because of two people that are involved. To my right is Deborah Beavers, who's the Cotillion Chair. Let's give her a round of applause. She and I have been friends for a little while, okay? And we started together in this building as staffers, and she's always been an individual that has constantly given back. And then to my left is a young lady who is the president of the chapter, Janice Murray, who, when I first met her, she was engaged to one of my best buddies in the legislature, Senator Kevin Murray. The two of them got married and had a family. And so when I first came to City Hall, I would see her years ago speeding westward on Wilshire Boulevard, trying to get her children to preschool on time. It's a trip, members, when you hold a little baby in your arms, or you get a chance to see a little baby. And here I am today, presenting to you this phenomenal organization, and that little baby that I would see walking around is one of the young ladies that is going to be part of this organization. And so all of you, I want all of you to know that you are very special. But it is my honor to present to you Jordan Nicole Murray. Where is she at? I wish I had some diaper-changing stories, but I do not. But I'm so proud of the young woman that you have become and the, this organization, the work that it has done to help not only you, but the other 21 young ladies that are part of this year's Links celebration. So with that said, I would like to present to you Bureau of Sanitation's own executive, our friend, and the president of Links, Los Angeles chapter, Janice Murray. Oh, no, wait, before Janice, can we give Senator Kevin Murray, who's here, where is he at? Give Senator Murray a round of applause. He had a little something to do with this. Now let's give Janice Murray a big round of applause.
Good morning. It is always an honor to be here and for you to recognize each one of our classes of debutantes. We have 22 girls here. They hail from all across Los Angeles. We have girls from the 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 5th districts who are participating, whether they live or go to school in those council districts. So again, we are so happy to be here, and thank you, Council President, for having us.
Oops. Okay, now I'd like to present you a resolution signed by every member of this council's ladies. Let's smile, say cheese, or cotillion, or whatever you choose to, and let's take a photo. Let's give these young ladies one more round of applause. They are part of the future of not only this city, but this country.
And Mr. Wesson, you have a speaker on the queue as well, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank and congratulate President Wesson for bringing this presentation to us today. To the young women who are here, remember this moment, savor the opportunity to be a part of this organization and a part of the process that you are. So many people have gone before you in the process and have laid the groundwork. My mother was one of you one time, and I was an escort. I think that was one of the first times I wore a tuxedo for more than 20 minutes, was when I was an escort, and the woman that I escorted, or the girl that I escorted, turned into a woman today and is one of the leading African-American women physicians at Kaiser today. So some of you have probably sat with her. So it's a big, big deal, and we thank you, we appreciate you, we put your arms around you, and thank you to the leadership who invests their time in building the next generation for our city and our community.
Corretts, you didn't get asked to be escort?
I didn't, I didn't make that cut, but I did have a few links who are friends. But let me just take this moment to just celebrate the Links, the outstanding organization, not just the Links that you provide locally, statewide, throughout the country, and worldwide. It's really a network of support that provides guidance and inspiration, not only to young women, but to young men. And so we just appreciate the unique role that Links have played in our community and the contributions that you continue to make. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Follow me, ladies.
Everybody here? Okay, great. Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues. This has been a very eventful week for the Korean-American community. And I know our council president, council member Herb Wesson, is in the back, and he's going to come back right out. But it's been an eventful week because we started with the naming of Radio Korea Square in Koreatown, then the announcement of $4 million that adds to the $3.5 million that Council President Herb Wesson helped usher in for the Korean-American museum, where the state had now added $4 million for the Korean-American museum. This has been a very eventful week for the Korean-American community. But today, I am so honored to be here before you to celebrate the 74 years of Korean independence and freedom. On August 15th, we celebrate Kwangbokjol, marking the end of colonial rule on the Korean Peninsula, the surrender of the imperial Japan in World War II, and freedom for the Korean people. I am joined by, today, by local and international leaders. Laura John, President of the Korean American Federation of Los Angeles. In Sang Hwang, Deputy Counsel General of the Republic of Korea. Young Park, President of the Liberation Association Southwest Region. Daniel Park of the Korean American Chamber of Commerce, Los Angeles. Grace Song of the March 1st Women's Association in the United States. And representatives from the Association of the Republic of Korea Army. Representatives from the South Bay Korean American Senior Center. And representatives from the Korean American Institute for Human Rights. We celebrate this day to honor those who fought for freedom, and to celebrate the continued success and independence of the Korean diaspora. Los Angeles is home to more Korean, people of Korean descent than anywhere outside of Korea. Millions of people call this place home, and this would not have been possible were it not for Korean independence. My life, and the life of so many others, would not have been possible without the heroes who fought for a free Korea. The fight for Korean independence may have ended 74 years ago, but it began 100 years ago, as a peaceful, youth-led movement known as Samyeol in Korean, translated to English as 3/1, or March 1st. This independence movement was unique. It did not begin with a sword or a bullet, but it began with the fervent Declaration of Freedom, not just for Korea, but for all people. "This we proclaim to all the nations of the world in witness of human equality," the students declared. "This we proclaim to our descendants so that they may enjoy their inherent right to nationhood." Thus began a long movement towards freedom. The independence of Korea is inextricably linked to the United States, and the two nations have enjoyed a long and enduring friendship ever since. We even have the Korea Friendship Bell in our city, located in Councilmember Jobus Gaiano's district, which is a beautiful memorial to our close ties and shared values. But let us not, but let us remember that this movement began peacefully, and as such, we should strive to end all conflicts and disagreements in the same way. Now I'd like to invite up President of the Korean American Federation of Los Angeles, Laura John.
Good morning, Council President Wesson and honorable council members. It is my absolute honor and pleasure to be here on behalf of the Korean-American community and the Korean American Federation of Los Angeles to thank you for celebrating this 74th Korean Independence Day. Today is momentous for Koreans worldwide. On August 15th, 1945, the Korean Peninsula was liberated by our allies from 34 years of Japanese rule. This year, we also commemorated the 100th anniversary of March 1st Korean Independence Movement Day with a historic parade on Wilshire Boulevard, among others. We commend the city of Los Angeles... We commend the city of Los Angeles for placing the utmost value on human rights, self-government, and promoting peace. We are proud of and grateful for landmarks named after notable Korean Angelinos such as the Dousan Anchang Ho Post Office, honoring the prominent Korean independence activists and one of the first Korean Angelinos and community leaders; Semily Square and Dr. Semily Medical and Health Sciences Magnet School, dedicated to the first Asian-American Olympic gold medalist, the first man to win back-to-back gold medals in platform diving, Korean War veteran and physician; and the Young Okim Academy and the Colonel Young Okim U.S. Army Memorial Highway, commemorating the first Asian-American Colonel to lead a U.S. battalion in war, a true hero, civic leader, and humanitarian. As we celebrate the Korean Independence Day, we praise the city that has embraced our community. We also reflect on the current Japan-South-Korea trade dispute, which not only threatens the relationship between the two nations, but affects the global economy. It really saddens us. With Los Angeles being home to the largest Korean-American population, we honestly hope the city will become the first in the U.S. to pass a resolution in the near future urging the federal government to help resolve this matter harmoniously. On behalf of the Korean-American community, I'd like to commend Council President Westen and the honorable council members for proclaiming the 74th anniversary of Korean Independence Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Next, I'd like to welcome the Deputy Counsel General of the Republic of Korea, Mr. In Sang Hwang.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. President and the council members and distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Korean government and Korean people, I'd like to thank the L.A. City Council for adopting this great resolution to recognize and respect Korean people's sacred fight for sovereignty and democracy and independence during Japanese colonial rule. We believe that the Korean independence in 1945 was not just given by the end of World War II. This was the reward for the sacrifices, dedication, and blood of our patriarchs' forefathers, not only in Korea, but also from abroad, especially here in the United States. The great spirit of abroad, I mean, this independence movement later on, became the solid basis of Korea's economic miracle and democratization. It helped to create today's Korea, which is world 12's largest economy and enjoying vibrant democracy. This year is the 100th anniversary of the March 1st Korean independence movement nationwide, so this resolution is especially meaningful. Taking this opportunity, also, I'd like to appreciate the contributions of Korean Americans to the community, which made today's special occasion possible. They brought economic prosperity, cultural diversity, and educational accomplishment to the community. I'm sure today's resolution on Korean Independence Day reaffirms the special relationship and provides an opportunity to celebrate and respect Korean and Korean-American communities' contribution to the city of L.A. and beyond. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Counsel General, and the President of the Liberation Association Southwest Region, Mr. Young Park.
Ladies and gentlemen, 74 years ago, in 1945, Korea was liberated from the Imperial Japan's rule, as you know. But Korea still suffers from the economic attack from the President Japanese government, as you know, last week. If I tone down aggression, can I say that politically, what shall I say, conflict? That word I don't like to say there, but can I be a little bit political this morning? American opinion leaders, politicians, and councilmen here could help resolve this unacceptable situation between Korea and Japan. Then, we really will be able to celebrate and enjoy the day of Korean liberation today. Thank you.
Thank you. And to close, our council president, who I think I've seen every day this week because there's been so many celebrations in the Korean-American community, Mr. Herb Westen.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members. It's important that we, as a people, celebrate occasions like this. The independence of Korea was just so important, and it's important for us to make sure we pass down information about this to all of the young people. But for the country, for our country, for the United States of America, one of the greatest things about us is that it takes so many of us to make this great nation. And just this week, and I think Mr. Councilmember Rue referenced it, we joined with the Korean community, and we honored organizations, and we're going to build the first Korean-American museum outside of Korea. I say all of this to say that the role that the Korean community has played in making Los Angeles the city that it is today, I just cannot say enough about it. We are greater because all of us come together. We are greater because we all contribute. So it is just my honor to stand with you today to look at this distinguished group and know that I have friends that maybe I wouldn't have had if I didn't have an opportunity to connect with this community. We shared grandchildren photos earlier today. I think that that's just an expression of what happens when we all come together because we all want the same thing, which is to live a better life than our parents so that our children and grandchildren live a better life than us. We want to make this the greatest city that it is so that we are the envy of the world. And the only way that we're going to do that is all of us, from all corners of this world, come together and continue to ensure that Los Angeles is the world-class city that it is. So I'm so honored to stand with you today. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give one more round of applause as we celebrate Korean Independence Day.
So on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I'd like to present this resolution to honor the independence of Korean America, Korea.
Mr. Smith, are you ready for your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is a real pleasure today to introduce and welcome to Los Angeles City Hall some very special guests. Please join me in welcoming the award-winning leadership group from Holmes Middle School. These students were recently recognized by a student leadership organization named Multiplying Good, with a top award and within the L.A. Unified School District for their exceptional leadership in developing a program to solve social need in their community. When I heard about the program, I was blown away by what these young people have accomplished, and I want you to see what they've accomplished. To give an idea of what these young people, men and women, have done, they have prepared a video, not professionals, but the students have prepared a video to talk about their program. So if you'd please roll the video.
Many students go home after school, and they may have a snack. And then they'll go do their homework on their own desk with their own school supplies. After that, they'll take a shower with running water, put on their nice, comfortable, warm clothes, and then eventually go to bed with a plush mattress and with warm blankets. But just imagine if all of what I just said was just immediately taken away from you. And for many, that is the case.
There are 17,258 homeless students in Los Angeles Unified and 2,465 in our local area. Children all across the world are living a life that we take for granted. We've come to realize that we are unaware of the people who are around us and the trials and tribulations they face beyond school hours. We are taking these statistics to use as a foundation for our main goal of no poverty and zero hunger.
And just in our Holmes Middle School community, there is a total of 35 homeless students.
We have realized that the number of homeless students in our school has increased over the years. This has become our motivation towards the goal that we are focused on.
Our goals are no poverty and zero hunger, as well as expanding volunteer capacity and collaboration. We believe that these goals in mind, we can make a greater impact and know what our purpose is. We tried our best to fulfill our goal through the projects that we did, hoping it would make a difference, big or small.
In order to fulfill these goals, we have conducted seasonal drives that contributed to our main project.
Our school supply drive that was held at the beginning of the year gives students supplies they don't have. In October, we held Socktober, where we collected donated socks because many kids go without socks, which is why they're the most requested item.
The candy split, where candy was separated after Halloween, gives the homeless a small snack to carry around.
During Christmas time, we made Box of Love with living essentials for middle schoolers who are often overlooked.
The four times we volunteered at the Valley Food Bank, we helped speed up production by separating canned goods from dry food.
SIA has taught us valuable lessons that can be carried through our lives. Cooperating and working together has greatly benefited us into becoming more understanding and open-minded people. As Martin Luther King said, life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?
Through the drives, we were able to impact an estimated 3,400 people. Although our drives didn't solve the issues at hand, it created a rippling effect that multiplied good in our community.
We are home, students in action!
Many students go home after school, and they may have a snack.
Extremely impressive, as you can see. As you can see from the video, which again was produced by the students, the middle school students have succeeded where so many people and authority and people of leadership and influence have not. They have ensured that their classmates, who have not had regular homes to sleep at night, can rest assured that when they come to school, they have the supplies they need. Through their project, they gathered school supplies, gift cards, hygienic supplies, food, and clothing. They engaged 85% of the student body at Holmes Junior High School and raised 1,200 hours of community service. For their efforts, they were awarded a trip to Washington, D.C. to participate in the Jefferson Award Dinner. It's stories like these of these young people that are so encouraging to us that even in our hardest times and the difficult days we are dealing with here in the city of L.A., that we see there's a great future for all of us, that our leaders that are coming up that will take our place someday and be the leadership of the future. Now, I'd like to invite to speak to you is the board chair of Multiplying Good, the organization that sponsors this program, to speak to you, Juan Setello.
Multiplying Good is a national nonprofit that channels the power of public service to unleash potential in individuals. For nearly 50 years, Multiplying Good has honored those who build better communities, trained, young leaders, and activated individuals in organizations to multiply the impact that they can deliver. Founding co-chairs were Senators Robert Taft Jr. and Jacqueline Kennedy Onassis. Founding Board of Selectors included Neil Simon, Hank Aaron, and Muhammad Ali. From this beginning, we are now here to honor Holmes Middle School. Through a continuum that starts with engagement and culminates in celebration, Multiplying Good fuels personal growth and multiplies the power of service to others. Holmes Middle School students participated in Multiplying Good's Students in Action, a unique youth service, leadership, and recognition program that supports, trains, and empowers today's youth to become leaders, problem solvers, entrepreneurs, and impactful global citizens. In L.A., the Multiplying Good works in a range of schools to help youth identify what they are passionate about changing and build the skills needed to do something about it. Nationally, Multiplying Good has trained over 30,000 students in action as empathetic leaders and change-makers. In 2017 and 2018, L.A.-based Students in Action teams engaged more than 1,600 peers in over 10,000 hours of meaningful youth-led service. We seem to be a country divided again. Yet, at Multiplying Good, solutions, we believe, to divisions is service. And service is one of the few things we can bring outside of ourself. Let's all strive to multiply good. Holmes Middle School, you inspire us to do so. Thank you.
Very, very well said. What an impressive presentation. You know, all of us had teachers sometime in our lives, or student advisors sometime in our lives, that really, we remember, the ones that made a difference in our lives. We can forget a lot of teachers we didn't like, but we always have those few that stand out. And this group of students had one to them that stood out that I'm sure they'll remember all of their lives. I'm very pleased to bring to the podium the teacher and advisor to the organization, Robin Obex.
Thank you. I was asked to say what it is that I, as an educator, do. Well, an education is... Being an educator is not my career. It's my passion. It's something that I've been doing for a very long time. Service was embedded in me as a youngster. And as Ronald Reagan said, we can't help everyone, but everyone can help someone. So five years ago, this will be our fifth year going into this program, when a principal came to me and said, I need somebody to run this program. I said, "Service? Yes. Helping the community? Of course." So we began. L.A. USD came and asked us to begin this program, and we did. And we did a number of things And we did a number of things the first couple of years. We were kind of like a ping-pong ball going back and forth as to what we needed to do, and then we decided to focus on the homeless students when we found out that there are so many, and the homeless population of students is growing so much, that we focused on them. The students here, well, you saw from their video what it is that they have accomplished. I am there to facilitate. They are the ones that do the work. They are learning twenty-first century skills. And I'm proud to say that I don't only have current students every year, but my former students come back, and I have a couple of them with me that were in Students in Action. They come back and they want to participate always. And then they go off to their high schools, and they begin their own service projects there, and they try to get their students at high school to participate with them. So, as you can see, the students decided that this year they needed to go outside of just the school, so they volunteered at the San Fernando Valley Homeless Shelter, which is a family shelter where they gave a Valentine party, and they participated in serving food and things, and also at the Valley Food Bank where we separated and boxed goods to send out to other people. The best way to find yourself is in service to others and to build community, and I hope that, well, and I know that these are our future leaders, and they are the ones that are going to go out and do what it is that they do now for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
And certainly, last but certainly not least, the students have chosen one of their own to speak to you today. She was a little nervous, told her, "Don't worry about it, you'll be fine. Based on what you guys have done, you'll fit right in here, so don't worry about it." I'm very pleased to bring to the podium, to speak on behalf of the students of this class, Paue So.
Good morning, everyone. When joining Students in Action, we envisioned ourselves as leaders who'd find and solve problems. With our heads wrapped around current and future projects, deadlines around each corner, and constant questioning of how to achieve more, we were so caught up in the chaos that we were blind to the fact that our characters were evolving. As the year came to a close, we took a step back and realized that we matured, and the uncertainty of our past selves vanishes with the culmination to leadership. Leadership taught us the value and pride in working hard for something we care about. It taught us that to get done, to get... it taught us that to get something done, we'll have to face obstacles, but if it's something that you care about, then you should be willing to give your all and maintain your dedication. Among the lessons we've learned, communication has had the most influence. Communication and cooperation go hand in hand, and everyone's opinion should be taken into account. We have come to realize that working with people of different backgrounds and ages is a privilege to see beyond one's pair of eyes and into the minds and approaches towards issues of others. Cooperating and working together has greatly benefited us into more understanding and open-minded. Most of all, we learn to find our means, who we are, and implement them in ways we can help towards reaching our goals. We realize the higher the mountain, the more breathtaking the view, just keep climbing. Thank you.
That was awesome. Thank you so much. So, ladies and gentlemen-
Mr. Smith, we have a speaker on the queue from the council.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. Smith, thank you so much for bringing in this great group. Congratulations, guys. You saw a need and you filled a need, and that's exactly what we're all here to do. And I think, as you stated in your comments, you know, we all come from varying backgrounds and histories and stories, but collectively, our stories can be far more powerful to resolving some of the biggest challenges that we're facing in our communities. And when you talk about that you saw, you know, on your campus, the students and how they're living in homelessness. I have a school in my district, and there are, and you know, you're not alone. There are many schools in our district where families are experiencing homelessness, and far often, they are overlooked, or people don't recognize that these are, in fact, our neighbors, these are your classmates. And for you to have recognized that and done something about it, I want to say thank you so much, because so often, that's not the response that people see, and you are taking it at your home, at your place, at your school, and I just want to commend you for exhibiting that leadership. I think it's critical leadership, and more of that is what we need, but more importantly, what we need is the diversity of voices, including your own, to be part of that conversation so that we can address this crisis head-on, and I want to thank you for doing that. But, you know, both my kids actually graduated from Holmes Middle School, so I'm not surprised that the leadership from this campus is still strong, but I just want to say to, of course, your incredible advisor, thank you for your work, for your example, to this organization for being there and support, but again, and to the collective community that is there to support this incredible work and your example of leadership. I just wanted to stand up and say thank you so much. We need more of you, and we look forward to expanding your example of leadership throughout our community, so congratulations and job well done.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. That was very nice of you. And to the members of the council, I'm just very proud that the top class in the Los Angeles Unified School District is Holmes Middle School in our district. We're very proud of you, we're very proud of your accomplishments. Mr. O'Farrell, by the way, is chairman of our homeless committee. Maybe you could learn something from these young people and take it into your committee as we face probably one of the greatest crises in our council, in our city history. So, thank you very much for your leadership in our community. Thank you for your accomplishments. We are proud of you, and I'm very proud to present this award to you that you will be able to take back to the students of Holmes and all the students of Holmes to show what you've accomplished and forever commemorate that you are the best of the best. Thank you so much. I'll get down a little so we can get the students in here.
Members, if you have recently visited or read about Armenia in travel publications or in the international news, you know that these have been exciting, booming times. Armenia is seen as one of the great, hot, new tourist destinations. They just experienced the Velvet Revolution, a great, inspiring, grassroots, democratic expression of independence and sovereignty and democracy in that country that's inspired countries throughout the world. There's a lot of foreign direct investment going in, there's a lot of building and economic activity going on. These are heady times for Armenia, and it's easy, in light of that, to forget that just a few decades ago, Armenia was suffering and struggling in, against horrible poverty in the context of war, against energy blockades. It was a very, very difficult time, starting in nineteen eighty-eight, when the second-largest city in Armenia was devastated by an earthquake that was seen in news around the world, a war that began that year as well between Armenia and Azerbaijan over the sovereignty of the ethnically Armenian-adjacent Republic of Artsakh, a war that would last for six years and take over thirty thousand lives. And then, throughout all that, the breakup of the Soviet Union and the difficulty of starting off as a newly-independent republic. And in the context of all of this, Turkey blockaded Armenia and prevented it from having access to basic energy supplies as well. So, the people of Armenia, struggling to establish a new independent democracy, had very little energy. Sometimes the lights were on for only an hour or two a day. People struggling to keep their homes warm during the winter and cook their food were forced to go out and cut trees down throughout Yerevan, in parks. People were cutting down trees. Throughout the villages outside of Yerevan, people were deforesting the area in order to have basic warmth and a basic energy source. And it was in that context that an American of Armenian descent, and an environmentalist and a philanthropist named Carolyn Mugar was visiting Armenia regularly, and when she saw that thousands of trees were being cut down by the people out of necessity, she had the idea of forming the Armenian Tree Project, which she founded in nineteen ninety-four as a project with the Armenian Assembly of America. And I'm very proud of this organization that, for twenty-five years, has mastered the reforestation of Armenia by learning how best to plant trees, forests, that would thrive in Armenia, and as a result, for twenty-five years, through the Armenian Tree Project's dedication and mastery, they have just planted their sixth-millionth tree in Armenia and have succeeded in planting over twenty-five hundred acres of new forests throughout that country. Now, that's been, of course, phenomenally important for Armenia, but it's important for the globe as well, because whether a tree is planted in Griffith Park or in Yerevan, it is contributing to the reduction of carbon in our atmosphere and the reduction of global warming. So, we are very much invested, anywhere in the world, with reforestation. It affects us here as well. So, this is an important story about Armenia and about these great volunteers and others who have contributed so much to the Armenian Tree Project, but it's also really important for those of us who care about the global environment and the future of the global environment. But in addition to all the environmental benefits, the Armenian Tree Project has also been a great source of economic activity in many villages that have very little opportunity. It's one of the principal employers of people in villages in far-flung areas throughout Armenia where over a hundred and fifty employees have worked annually in this reforestation process, so it's an opportunity to create not only a sustainable environment, but a sustainable economy as well. So, we've seen here in California, and, Mr. President, you've spoken often and passionately about the impact of global warming and also how much deforestation contributes to that. And recently, as we suffered through the horrendous wildfires, we experienced that very personally here in Los Angeles. So, I think that it's especially appropriate that, right now, as this city experiences so much of that as well, that we recognize people who, for twenty-five years, have been giving of themselves, giving back, to try to create a new opportunity, a new future for reforestation and for reduction of global warming, and that is why it's so important that we celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Armenian Tree Project. And so, with that, I would like to introduce to you the community outreach manager for the Armenian Tree Project here on the West Coast, Anahit Garipian. Anahit?
On behalf of ATP, I thank the City Council of Los Angeles, President of the Council, Herb Weston, and Councilman Kukorian for this honor. Over the past twenty-five years, Armenian Tree Project has planted almost six million trees in Armenia, helped to rejuvenate hundreds of communities, and created many jobs. ATP has also provided environmental education to thousands of students in Armenia and in the Armenian-American community. Our educational program is in most of the Armenian schools in Los Angeles. Our support for this work comes from individual donors. The people of Los Angeles have been very generous to ATP. It is because of their support that we are celebrating the twenty-fifth anniversary and the six-millionth tree this year. I would like to thank our devoted friends and supporters of ATP who are with me on such an important day. Miran Tumajan, Western Region Director of Armenian Assembly of America, who opened doors for ATP to many Armenian and American organizations in California. Lucy Varpetian, Principal Assistant City Attorney of City of Glendale. Dedicated donor, Lucy organized funding in L.A. for establishing Grand Ding Forest in Armenia. Sevander Baidrosian, Armenian language teacher at AGBU Manukand Emirçan School, our great ambassador since 2011. Armine Juraqat Spanyan, co-founder of Armenian Kids Club, publishing books that are available source in helping diasporic kids learn Armenian and Armenian language. Delilah Shabazian, member of Nerush NGO of Western Diocese of North America and one of the first participants of the ATP's Building Bridges Program. Together with these people, who have become the ATP family members, I would like to thank everybody in this hall for celebrating the twenty-fifth anniversary of ATP with us. Thank you.
Mr. President, someplace in Armenia, there's a grove of trees named after my daughter as well, and so if anybody would like to go to... anybody would like to make a donation and have a grove of trees, or a tree, or an entire forest named after somebody, how would they do that? Where would they go to your website in order to do that?
So, you can go to Armenian Tree Project website, and there is a place and a button, Donate, and you always can plant trees in honor or in memory of your dear ones. And you can plant trees in honor of organizations that you serve. You can just create a park if you want, which will serve as a meeting point, let's say, of the graduates of some schools or whatever. These plantings are always very popular among our donors in Armenia. We have very, very many sites which are assigned to the donors.
And, Mr. Kukorian, we have a couple of council members on the queue who would like to say something about this wonderful effort.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian, for bringing in this wonderful program to be recognized, and it's great to see Lucy. It's been some time since I've seen you, but, you know, my deputy chief of staff right now is in Yerevan, and she's doing some work on infrastructure. She and her husband are working at some of the local elementary schools to put solar panels and help support the infrastructure at academic institutions there for kids. And I think it's so beautiful how wonderfully supportive and connected you all are in creating this very deep-rooted connection, pun intended, with this project. And I think, you know, restoring and continuing the connection with Armenia here in Los Angeles, here, you know, with so many of your wonderful efforts, I just wanted to stand up and say congratulations. I think it's really wonderful, the work that you're doing. I'm proud that I have a member of my team who is equally committed to doing all that she can to, you know, continue that effort as well, and I think it's just a beautiful example of how deeply tied the roots are between members of the community here and still to the homeland. And it's wonderful to see your efforts, and I wanted to just stand up and congratulate you for them.
Thank you, Mr. President. According to an article last month in the journal Science, since the beginning of the Industrial Revolution, humans have put about three hundred billion metric tons of carbon in the Earth's atmosphere. If humanity engaged in epic reforestation of the planet, we could almost completely reverse the effects of that. And so, what you're doing, just by reforesting Yerevan, is a massive step in the right direction, and cities, counties, states across the country, the Amazon rainforest needs to be reforested. As we move forward in life, if humans engage in the same deforestation, it's like committing mass suicide, because the planet will not survive. So, groups like what, that do what you're doing are helping not just to improve the quality of life where people live in cities, but you're also taking a step toward restoring life on the planet as we know it. So, I love what you're doing. We should all elevate these wonderful movements that people are engaging in all over the planet, because it will end up saving us as a race, and it'll end up saving all life on Planet Earth. And that's not hyperbole. It's scientific, it's there, it's proven. We have the means and we have the motivation to do what you're doing, and because of We have the means and we have the motivation to do what you're doing, and because of your leadership and what you're endeavoring over the last 25 years to do just in Yerevan sends exactly the right signal that everyone needs to hear. So, congratulations and Godspeed.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations, and I think you're our role model here in Los Angeles. We're hoping to plant almost 100,000 trees in the next couple of years, but you certainly are an incredible example, and we salute you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, thank you. And with that, I'd like to present this certificate of recognition, signed by all of the members of the City Council, in recognition of the 25th anniversary of the Armenian Tree Project. Thank you very much. Let's step forward.
Could we ask the CAO to come to the table? Thank you. Colleagues, I called the special. We've got before us 21 employee contracts, MOUs today, and it's a big deal. And I've been reading over what the reports say, but I just wanted to get some information on the record. It's a significant commitment of funds, and I think it's important that we acknowledge that. I also wanted, before I asked the question of the CAO, to ask that we do future MOUs a little bit differently. The first I learned any details about these were when I saw it posted to the Personnel Committee Agenda the other day. I know we have a police contract coming up. The only information I've gotten on it is from my senior lead officers who've been voting to ratify the contract. And I think it would behoove us if we were all better informed at an earlier stage about what it is we're voting for in the MOUs and in the side agreements. So, I'd ask for that going forward. So, just basically, Mr. Lewellin, if you could just sort of summarize, you know, what are the deal points? What are they getting and what are we getting?
Good morning, councilmembers. Rich Lewellin with the CAO's office, and I'm here with Dana Brown, our Head of Employee Relations, who is a bit older from having many, many months of meetings with the coalition over these contracts. These contracts are for the 18, 19, 19, 20, 21, 2021 year. So, they're about -- so, they are in their second year. We had tough negotiations with our union partners over many months and many, many meetings with the EERC over these contracts. As you've -- in the budget this year, as you know, the contracts, they are partially retroactive to last year and this year, are both already in this year's budget, so you already passed that, so that you will not be finding new money this year. The contracts provide basic wage increases. They're outlined on page 3 of the report. And then, special compensation adjustments, and there are also some very small costs associated. Two small units moved from being nonrepresented to joining a union, to joining a coalition. So, there are small, very small costs from transitioning them from the nonrepresented pay package to the union pay package. The total is about 282 million over three years, certainly a significant investment. We did not get everything we wanted, but our union partners will be happy to tell you they did not get everything they wanted either. In particular, in light of honestly booming economy and the high cost of living here, and particularly housing, our union partners wanted more money. We wanted to give them less money. We ended up sort of in the middle. We attempted, we talked at great length with our union partners about healthcare. We ultimately negotiated an agreement, a letter of agreement, where the union partners agreed to work with us towards saving the equivalent amount that would be their contribution to 10% towards healthcare. We wanted, again, more on that. Our union partners wanted less. We ended up in the middle. We had minor changes since we went last round. There are many changes in state law, like new employee orientation. So, we had to change our contracts on that basis. Our bonding leave in the city, it used to be the system was if you had two employees, a city-city family, the two partners couldn't both take bonding leave. Now, they can both take bonding leave. So, overall, and we -- overall, we believe it's a fair contract. It is a three-year contract. We are in the second year of three. And as Mr. Bonin points out, we do most of this with the EERC, and I appreciate the cautionary tale about making sure the members are more involved, and I hear that. And we are here if you have further questions.
Just a couple of quick ones. Reading over the details, it sounds like a reasonable package. Glad to see that the compensation is adjusting to the cost of living out there. And I think the coalition have been wonderful partners in helping us improve service, absolutely But there are critics out there who are going to say to the 15 of us when we go out to community meetings, "Oh, the city gave away the store." So, just how would you respond? How would you suggest we respond about what the city got out of the deal?
You know, councilmember, I hear it and I appreciate it, and I think that's a hard one to respond to. Our coalition partners will tell you they requested more, and we started less, as many negotiations do. We feel that we sort of ended up in the middle. And for those who will say, gee, you could have gotten, you know, 0.1% less, we tried, and it was certainly many, many months with your EERC, the mayor, and your council leadership sort of directing those negotiations. We think it's ultimately a fair package. And for those who say, I think you could have gotten a dollar less, certainly, I think our union partners would say, well, we tried to get a dollar more.
And to be clear, the amount from this year's budget is covered and anticipated in this year's budget?
Yes, sir. And there is a small retroactive, there is a retroactive part. It started during the course of last fiscal year, and that part is covered as well.
Final question is something that a number of us on the council and members of the coalition have been sort of in lockstep on over the past few years, is a frustration with outsourcing and the poor quality of work. The example Mr. Keretz and I always use is tree trimming. When we outsource tree trimming, it's a crappy job, and we get complaints. When our own staff does it, we get compliments, and it's well done. Does any of the MOUs or the side letters speak to outsourcing versus in-house services?
Yes, sir. We agree, we negotiated a letter of agreement on outsourcing in the last round, which we continued in this round, to continue talking to our union partners about are there ways to bring work in-house?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any further questions? If not, let's call the question on this. Can we ask for the vote? Will we open the roll? Close the roll and tally the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Motion passes. Now, let's go into the special meeting, adjourn the regular session, and move into the special.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscay, Nocedia, Harastas, and Weezer, Keretz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Ruse, Smith, Wesson. Twelve members present and accor, Mr. President. The first item is item nine, an item for which a public hearing has been held, although there are cards on this item.
Thank you, sir, and Mr. Ebenstein. It is, it's good to see that we've made a deal with the labor group. I was just chatting a little bit. It's not a great deal for everybody, which probably means it's a basically good deal. The things I'm concerned about are the retaliation, harassment, and discrimination cycle, and I'm worried about employees like the 911 operator who simply filed to see somebody, a psychologist, and then it got out into her environment, and that resulted in a big lawsuit, which is bad. I'd like to protect workers, and I'd like people to be trained properly on those kinds of, how to handle those kinds of inner office, so they don't turn into big liability that then Krikorian and the rest settle quietly and/or embarrassingly under a judgment by a court. I will also say that by agendizing today's item on a special meeting agenda, you have taken a comment, but you labeled it, "Items for which public hearings have been held." Because of your past practice, this is a violation. You are misleading the public and are inhibiting folks who might want to comment on the big labor deal that even Mike Bonin didn't know about. So, I would ask you to simply cure and correct that immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Antonio Ramirez. Ms. Ramirez? There you are.
This is what we go through. I am very worried about our officers, our beloved LAPD officers and sheriffs deputies who are not being protected by these unions. They are under gang seats. These LAPD officers are outnumbered by these gangs, all gangs all across Los Angeles, and not to mention even the homeless population, because 90% of these goddamn homeless individuals are violent. They are wicked. They are malicious, and they have no humanity. They are devoid of any humanity, especially these goddamn Latino gangs and homeless.
Mr. President, the speaker is not speaking on the agenda item. You're not speaking on the agenda item?
Which I know you're there to nail my ass so I can get myself thrown out. I know why you're there. Believe me, I'm not stupid.
No, you're not on the item.
Anyway, I am worried. You don't, the city attorney does not prosecute cases against these criminals, yet these poor officers are getting killed everywhere, every day.
Still not on the item. You're done with your time. Could you please have her removed? She's been off-topic for a while. Mr. Spindler.
Now, today, we're talking about the moo. That's right, like a cow. Various MOUs. I spent hours the other day in the PAWS meeting with Mr. Smith and Mr. Keretz, and we all agreed that all of these moo's should be revoked. It should be revoked. So, we thoroughly agree. Get rid of all of these moo's. That's right. That's what Monica Rodriguez does every morning when she gets up. That's right. So, support the cows and say no. And finally, I'm glad to see Herb Wesson starting his new retirement as babysitter. That's where he belongs, not here. You belong here. You'd make a great president.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Mr. Sacks not present? All right.
Good morning. For the record, Arnold Sacks. And I guess this is another test, one of those tests. Item nine, which is what you have here, is a personal animal welfare committee report relative to the 2018-21 successive memorandum of understanding. So, this is three years? Is this fiscal years, 2018 through 2021? Or is it, because then it'd be four years, actually. And then, because item number two, which Mr. Bonin held, is also a, was about a memorandum of understanding between unions 2, 4, 8, 9, 12, 13, 14, 17, 18, 34, 36, 63, and 64. So, you have actually two items here that are memorandums of understanding. Which is which? And by the way, since this is also an animal welfare committee report, any word on getting rid of the rats in City Hall? I think that's a good ending.
If there's no other questions from members, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That item has passed. Let's adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
General Public Comment. There are still some cards.
All right, the first speaker under General Public Comment is Sarah Sandoval. Sarah Sandoval, I guess not here. Antonio Ramirez, to be followed by Wayne Spindler, Arnold Sacks, and Peter.
Thank you very much. Please, don't donate any money nor tangible items to the fucking elite Republican Zionist Jews. They are highly skilled crooks, unethical, inhumane, wicked, malicious, and fucking thieves. They steal your homes, your inheritances, your bank accounts, your money, and they ruin your credit and your livelihood, and finally put you out on the streets homeless and impoverished to discredit you. These fucking elite Zionist Jews run all the criminal monopolies, including all the illegal weapons, drugs, human trafficking, organ harvesting, all gangs, the perverted fucking media, the orgy-filled bisexual tranny lesbian faggot entertainment industries, the American jurisprudence, the federal state and county and city agencies, i.e. the fucking city attorney, Michael Fuer, and county DA Jew Larry Hafetz, who don't prosecute cases against violent homeless skid row niggers, or changu Latino wetbacks, or white trash junkies, or domestic terrorists, while our LAPD officers and sheriffs deputies are getting killed for having to enforce the rule of law and uphold public safety. God bless them. God bless our LAPD and sheriff's deputies.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Mr. Spindler? Mr. Sacks?
Apparently, we have some interest in what I found out about Mike Fuer after that FBI raid. All of a sudden, I'm a source. I'm not a source. I'm just a little farmer. That's all I am. I go up to my little farm, and I farm. That's all. I'm just a farmer. Alls you had to do in February 2016 was settle with me. I told you, man. I told you down the road where we were going. I told you. Look at Kern Price's face. None of this shit Kern would have happened. None of this shit Jose would have happened. I was on your fucking side, man. I didn't want this shit, but you know what? You fucking guys took me to the stumps. So, now, yes, yes, there is dirt, filth, and the sinners will be run out of the temple, say the Lord. That's right. Next week, you're gonna see it.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Thank you. Next speaker is Arnold Sacks. If he's here. If he's not, the next speaker listed is Peter.
I didn't know I could say fuck, so I just want to get it out of the way. I am here to talk about animal welfare real quick. This is my fiancee, Keisha. We own a dog business, hiking business up by Griffith Park. We own a dog business, a hiking business up by Griffith Park. We are very concerned about these dogs that are being walked by these other companies that are not providing water and shade when it's possible, and we're wondering how we go about talking to the council about maybe getting some, some signs posted in the entrances of Griffith Park, maybe with some graphics about how important it is, because a lot of these dog walkers and owners are going up and relying on spouts that may or may not be available up there, or they're waiting till they come back, and it's, it's a big concern with us.
Thank you.
I'll have my staff come talk to you about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, Mr. Sacks?
Thank you, and thank you for your, I appreciate the fact that you let me come up here and speak. For the record, Arnold Sacks, and it's very inspiring to hear some of the conversations this morning, so I'm going to do some inspirational conversation, I hope, also. I've come before the council and talked a few times about the $15 an hour minimum wage raise and the fact that Lyft and Uber drivers are, actually should be classified as workers for the companies, and there's a lot of stuff going on. There was a Dynamex ruling in the, in the state courts that said, that laid out the parameters for what, what makes a driver an employee, and Lyft and Uber are both arguing about the fact that the new changes will affect their bottom line. In yesterday's newspaper, Lyft said that they're going to be making $3.47 billion this year. What's the bottom line? They should pay the drivers what they're due, and you should support them.
That's it for general public comment. Madam Clerk, what else is before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Members, any announcements? I don't see any. If we could rise for adjourning motions? I'm looking to my left. I don't believe I see any adjourning motions. Looking to my right, I don't see any motions there, so we are adjourned.